Please rise for invocation by Councilmember DeWorke, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Mayor, most heavenly gracious father, thank you for all the blessings that you give us. Thank you for the guidance that you bestow upon this body and our citizens and leaders in this community. Thank you for also a very successful weekend where community members and families and children were able to congregate in our downtown safely. And thank for the team here at the city that puts all that together. Also, a special thank you for the 20 hostages that were released. I know that there are nations and families both that are so very grateful for that. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember John DeWorke.
Here.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brisington. Councilmember Russell Stahl.
Here.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White.
Here. Thank you very much. Counsel, you have the minutes of September 22nd. They'll stand approved as submitted unless there are objections. Seeing none, they are so approved. Up front, we have some folks who signed to speak to us today. We have a three-minute rule, so please observe that. Happy to hear from Ms. Aiken. Aiken? Yes, ma'am. Hi. That's on an agenda item, so we appreciate that.
My name is Angela Aiken. I live at 306 Loop Street, Greenville, South Carolina, off Pancet Highway. My property and my community is adjacent to the Green Lake Bus Facility. I'm here today because I felt compelled to be here. We've been fighting this thing and been going through a lot of changes back and forth since it really got really hot during 2017. But before that, things was in motion. I ask today, I come today to ask you guys to just, can we just take a moment to hold up on this next vote? Because there are a lot of issues. I know some, a lot of y'all know of the issues, but to, for this city council to take the time out to actually listen to the citizens that this involves. This next, the next vote that you all vote on is going to annex that bus facility into the city. I ask you guys to please not do that because it's going to leave us, which is right around that bus center, still in the county, not being neglected, and you guys being able to move and thrive. You know, if we're, if y'all say letting go of the hostages and stuff like that, we feel hostage. And we ask y'all to let, please let us go. Hear our voice. You know, we right here on the homeland. We plotted this. And we're asking that you guys, you know, that land, there was some transfers that was done on that land that was not right. It was, it was not a legal transfer. And I'm asking y'all, I want y'all to put it on record that I am letting y'all know that there was a lot of stuff done before this, all the stuff took place. You know, before the whole bus stuff took place, that land, all of that land was not supposed to be digged in. That land was redrawn in 2017 without, not one zoning put into that community, not one zoning to give us notice that they was going to redraw those lines. They just bought maps over there to want, to the one person that was the president and left those maps there. But nobody else in the community had no awareness of it or anything. So that land that was part of that center, that recreation center, historically black neighborhood, recreation center, that property was taken. And we are asking that you guys be the one to step in and help us. Help us stop this thing. You know, we don't have no problem with the progression. We want progression, but we want inclusive progression. That's what the city is saying for. That's, that's part of y'all mission statement, inclusiveness. So we want to be included whenever it comes to stuff like this right here. I hear you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Mr. Farmer? Oh, didn't see you back there. I'm sorry.
Joe Farmer, 207 Alpine Way. The BZA is not following your directives. Restaurants are allowed exceptions to serve alcohol from midnight to 2:00 a.m. with special permit if they follow additional rules. On October 2nd, the BZA heard an appeal where a restaurant's permit was revoked as they were not serving food when checked by police at 11:45 p.m. All parties agreed that food was not available. The excuse was a lack of training and understaffing. Not exactly the excuse we want to hear from a restaurant serving late-night alcohol. City staff recommended a revocation of the permit. The BZA questioned the applicant during a two-hour meeting with questions including, what is your monthly revenue? What is your rent? How much does pizza cost to make? The board was concerned more with the applicant's financials than the ordinance you passed. A motion was made to suspend the permit for four months. Some members were concerned that impact would impact holiday revenue, and ultimately, a 45-day suspension was given. So this is, is this the new penalty? Is counsel going to amend the ordinance to now say, instead of revocation, it's a 45-day suspension? There are several problems that exist. One, the BZA did not support staff who had, who had an excellent presentation of the facts. Mary Douglas explained why counsel has requirements for permits. No provision exists for the BZA to adopt new penalties. Any other permit holder now has a new precedent to quote in case they're in violation. The solution, this month, counsel can appoint two new members, and you should. Either replace the remaining five or retrain them. BZA was a major reason we had to establish new zoning code since they gave so many exceptions over the prior 20 years. Counsel needs to get BZA aligned with your wishes, or you have abdicated all authority to them. Now, you all know me. They all know me. We all know I'm watching. How can they continue to make improper decisions knowing I'll report to you? Frankly, they don't respect you. It's past time for change, so I urge you to do it now. These guys, I've come to you before, they're going to get you in a jam because they're not following the procedures. The only penalty here is a revocation and then reapplication at one year's time. They just made a new rule for you. Couple of your attorneys, guys, consider this. There is major, major change that needs to be made with this BZA. If you're not going to replace them, at least tell these guys what you want and what they should and shouldn't do. Two hours to come to conclusion that everybody admitted to is ridiculous.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Yossi? Hi. Did I pronounce that correctly?
You did. Thank you. And I'm going to bring a little lightness to this. I appreciate this. I am Melody Yossi. I'm a community liaison with Able and Bride, which is a company in Greenville. We, and I'm just here to thank the council seated and those that have come before us and Mayor Knox, who's been here forever, it seems like, in your planning and making, that wasn't a slam, that was a thank you. In your planning to make Greenville a very special destination. We are in bridal. Our founders, Gabe and Wendy Rivera, fell in love, met and got married here in Greenville, went to Virginia, started Able and Bride. It is now a multimillion-dollar boutique brand, and they chose Greenville as their destination to open their second shop. We've been in business for two years. Our bridal philosophy is different than most in that we really want to celebrate the bride. See, I told you this is much happier. Just enjoy this. We want to celebrate the bride. We want to give them an opportunity to savor that moment. And what you all have done with Greenville, I've grown up here. So I was here before the plans were even on the table, and it's a beautiful city. It is a destination. And I just want to say thank you from our company to the council and invite you as VIPs to a very special event we're having called "The Destination Was Always You," which goes right along with everything that you guys have worked so hard for. I know you get a lot of, there's a lot of work that has to be done, obviously, but I just want to thank you for what you have done. "The Destination Was Always You" is actually going to be held at the Grand Bohemian, which is another feather in your cap for bringing that beautiful facility here. It's going to be on the green space, and we would love to be able to honor you as city council and mayor. If any of you can come or send representatives, bring your significant others. It's going to be a gorgeous bridal couture show with all kinds of events, and there's a beautiful, if you like cars, there's going to be some really phenomenal cars there. But it's just an opportunity to celebrate Greenville, to celebrate the destination that you all have created, and to celebrate our brides in the fact that the destination was always you. So we would love to invite you there. And that's it. I just want to invite you to something nice.
What's the date?
October the 28th. It's Tuesday.
Oh, coming right up.
Yes, it's coming right up. And we have, you can, I've got invitations for all of you on the council, and my phone number's on the back of the card, so thank you for considering that.
Well, we'll have to say I do. Sure.
Where, where is your business located?
Your, your business address. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. That's something different. Oh, okay. Yeah. Very, very fine. Okay. Mr. Thornton? Master Thornton?
Mr. Clarence Thornton, I reside at 114 Dorf Street, Greenville, South Carolina. Just like to say, African-Americans still have to beg for their neighborhoods. 2025, we still have to beg for equality in our neighborhoods, to be treated fairly in America. The city boasts about the amount of affordable housing to those who are up rich and upper end, middle class. It's affordable. For those who come from other states who pay higher wages, it's affordable. Their retirement from those states will not allow them to have a higher standard of living. But what do you do when you come from a state where your minimum wage is $7.25 an hour? Citizens who've worked for Greenville for 20 or 30 years in low-income jobs in this state would be pushed out, forced out of their homes if they are going on the average, national average. Former city managers still advise to focus on remaining and strengthening our existing neighborhoods. They have annihilated the poor, low-income neighborhoods through gentrification. Just right around Greenville, all we see is apartments and apartments, high-end apartments. You would never own an apartment. The developers have a sight on Greenville and other cities. And our citizens of Greenville who make Greenville fit national interests, it's the citizens, are being treated worse than ours, not even humans. It's the citizens that make Greenville. As rent continues to rise, to increase, more people will be forced into homelessness. I was just over at San Antonio, they're going to give away a hundred to 100,000 bags of food a day. That total has risen to 200-plus, as I spoke with the governor. That's a hundred increase as more people are forced to make decisions to pay rent than buy food. We have a need, and we are behind. You are behind on the affordable housing. When you're in a race, if you are behind, not to run faster and work harder. No other city, from Iowa to South Carolina, has gentrified and displaced so many low-income residents. As for, as for affordable housing, apartment is not the idea. That's just what you're talking about. You would never own it. I mean, never own it. You are at the mercy of the developer. It's going to always keep people in harm. All those apartments, you're not going to own it. What you could do is give your children a heritage. Oh, I'm going to give you an apartment? Before we had all these apartments, we had homes. Everybody see apartments that in the city of Greenville? There were homes there. Something somebody could give their children. Y'all sit in nice rooms. Don't offer them title. They work for, I don't know how many years, low income, $7.25. Their retirement will not allow them to afford the national interest rate, and you sit up there laughing. Just said, you love me feed my sheep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, counsel, you got some recognition and appointments to be made. We'll get right to those. You got some adjustments to be made as well.
This sheet's good.
Cut off the press.
Sheet's good. Let me take it back.
This one? All right.
I have had this one to you.
Okay. All right. Which one do we start with? Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate that very much. Okay. Accommodation Tax Advisory Committee, we have a few folks who were, have concluded their service, and we wanted to thank them and recognize them. So, Councilmember Dow, I believe you got the first, the first one on the thank you list.
But first, so I'd like to thank and acknowledge Mary Hip for serving on the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, representing Metropolitan Arts Council. I do not see Mary here. No?
Or Dave.
She had served since October 1st, 2017. Additionally, Dave Edwards, representing Visit Greenville SC, who is not here, served since January 10th, 2022, and we thank them for their service.
Okay. Councilman DeWorke?
Ken Betts, served on the Board of Zoning Appeals for two terms, and he is rolling off. Need to turn my microphone on, Madam Clerk. Sorry. Ken Betts has served for eight years on the Board of Zoning Appeals and is rolling off, and a special recognition to Mr. Betts. And Councilmember Fleming?
Yes, Martha Herlone Lovren. She has served on the Community Development Advisory Committee since November 1st, 2023, and we congratulate her and thank her for her service.
We appreciate their service. We have some new appointments to be made. Nominations. Accommodation Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Gibson.
I'd like to recommend the reappointment of William Groves and Josh Riley, each to a full term ending October 31st, 2027.
Okay, those nominations, any of the nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. They are so named. Board of Zoning Appeals, speaking of that, Councilmember Stahl.
Yes, first of all, I'd like to reappoint Lauren Roundsville and recommend the appointment of Sean Scootmeyer to a full term ending October 31st, 2028.
All right. Any other nominations from that nominating committee? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Councilmember Dow?
Yes, for the Firefighters Pension Fund Board of Trustees, I'd like to recommend the reappointment of Kevin Mertens to a full term ending October 31st, 2029.
Okay, Mr. Mertens is nominated for reappointment. Any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Greenville Housing Fund, that's my nomination and appointment, reappointment of Brent Abbott to a full term ending October 31st, 2028. Public Safety Citizen Review Board, Councilman DeWorke.
Thinking, Mayor, we put forth Dolores Durham to a full term ending October 31st, 2027, PSC RB.
All right. Thank you. Any other nominations to that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oy. Okay, opposed?
Mayor White, we need to, we need to vote on the housing fund.
That's my appointment. I'm the only one who votes on that one.
Oh, okay.
And I voted aye. So, hey, I don't get to do that very often, but when I do, I'll take advantage of it. Councilman Fleming, you got the next nomination.
Yes, on the Richland Cemetery Advisory Committee, and we recommend a reappointment of Robin Coon, Shale Simmons, Pamela Sims, and Sam Simmons. Each one of these to a full term ending on October 31st, 2027.
Okay, those nominations are made. Any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. SC TAC, Councilman Stahl.
Really? You've been busy. SC TAC, I'd like to recommend the appointment of Bob Bunchman to a full term ending October 31st, 2028.
Okay, any other nominations?
Thank you, my dear.
TAC, all in favor?
You might want to recognize him.
Anybody here, was we nominate? Would you? Thank you very. Yeah, well, wait a minute. He wants to get approved first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. You're safe. Yeah, thank you very much. Could you stand so we can see? Yeah, thank you for your service on that. That's, that's a good one. Yeah, very important one. And I have one more appointment for the mayor, reappointing Brock Coontz to the Community Development Advisory Committee and also appointing Brent Cooler to a full term. Is he here? Brent Cooler here, by any chance? No? Okay. Appreciate, so much appreciate people who give their time to serve on these boards. Very much.
Mayor, I do have one. Scrivener's era, if you will please, I don't think that'll affect anything, but the Public Safety Citizens Review Board is a four-year appointment, so you would be reappointing Ms. Durham through October 31st of 2029.
Okay, well, let's be recognized, board.
Thank you.
Okay, consent agenda. We'll have one item we wanted to take off the consent agenda and put on the regular agenda.
Yes. Given Ms. Aiken's presence and comments, I'd like to recommend that we pull item 11D from the consent agenda. This is the annexation for the Green Lake Facility to the regular agenda.
Consider it regular agenda. Okay. Motion second for the consent agenda.
Second.
Deleting D. Okay. Motion second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Okay, then 11D.
An ordinance to annex approximately 26.58 acres of real property and 10.08 acres of adjacent right-of-way located at 205 Arcadia Drive and to provide the zoning designation of CV.
Sameer.
Second.
Motion second. Any comment?
Yeah, just to make a comment, this annexation, and we talked a good bit at first reading, but just to reiterate, the property that's being annexed, this was a request that came directly from the Greenville Transit Authority that owns that property. It's only for the property that's held by Greenville Transit Authority where the maintenance and operations facility is. I can attest to the fact that there was significant, and I mean significant, public input during that, planning of that project, the construction of that project. So I wholeheartedly recommend again that we vote to approve.
All right.
And welcome the neighboring community. If they want to pursue annexation into the city, they're certainly free to do so.
We are always open to neighborhoods who want to come into the city. That's always an interesting one because that's an area that pays higher taxes, pays higher property taxes than if it were in the city. So if you do annex, your city property, your, your property taxes go down instead of go up if you're in that neighborhood. Yeah.
It also, just to be clear, it does not include the community center that, that the New Washington Heights community uses.
Yeah, it doesn't include the community center. Right. Okay.
Plus, we do a lot of neighborhoods that we build sidewalks, we put street lighting in, and we give people a voice that they don't have in the county. We do all that. We have neighborhood associations we work with. So most people in this west side of Greenville, when they find out about all these things, they say, hey, we'd like to be annexed, and that's how we do it. And we do have people who will have to explain it in detail as we move along. Okay, counsel.
Wait just a second. Can I ask, can I ask, before we vote on that?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Can I ask Ms. Aiken, was it the fact that you wanted us to annex more than just this piece of land? Was that your statement?
At this moment, no, ma'am. That's not my statement. My statement is that that piece of land that we keep talking about, that a large portion, a portion of that 26 acres, 26.5 acres of land was already part of the New Washington Heights Community Center.
Right. Okay.
That land was redrawn in 2017, and there was never a zoning hearing, zoning signs, no notification or anything given on the behalf, for that community to be notified or made aware of it. That land was taken.
Yeah. I understand now. So you're saying, because it's in the county, so.
It's in the county. What I am saying to you, to you guys, is this. Green Lake and the city of Greenville, uh, city of Greenville knew that the Green Lake Bus Hub was a city entity before they brought it into the county. They knew that there was discrepancies in the changing of the land. But nobody took the time to stop and talk to the community. They used, they blackface us by using the New Washington High School alumni to get approval.
Mayor, I'm going to vote.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to be clear about that.
We was not, we have always been in the fight for it. We have always wanted clarity. We have always wanted you guys to know what was going on in our community. I called Mayor Knox White's office in 2017, and I spoke with his secretary, who told me that he was not interested in talking to me because I did not live in the city and he was not mayor of that county.
Exactly. Oh, I see what you're saying. Move to a vote. I just wanted to.
Clerk?
I just wanted to be clear because this was the first I heard of it.
I'm going to vote.
That basketball court that's owned the property of the New Washington Heights Community Center, which we have occupied for, I'm 60 years old, and it's been there forever. The first place black people go and congregate.
But it's not a part of this.
Yes, it is. It comes right, right half, right half across the basketball.
We are annexing the parcel that is owned by the Greenville Transit Authority.
Okay.
By their petition.
Right there is part of the 26.5 acres. It comes straight across the basket, straight across the parking lot. We won't even have an interest into our center. Whenever you annex it, it's going to have gone belong to the city and half going to belong to the county.
No, it doesn't belong to the city.
Well, we, we will talk about this. I'll give you my call. We'll talk about this in a later time because, like I said, since it's in the county, I'm not aware of it.
Yes, ma'am.
But anyway, thank y'all.
To let y'all know. So, so y'all went across and on, on the side of history, that's dark.
Okay. Y'all have. Well, well, the county council, you, you'll have to address where you're addressing to them directly, et cetera. But thank you anyway. I just wanted to be clear because I.
Beautiful job down here, downtown Greenville's beautiful. I have to come down and visit myself sometime. You've done a great job, but I'm.
Yeah. We're, we're fine. We do a great, we, we do a great job in neighborhoods too, not just downtown. Okay, clerk, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Regular agenda, 15A.
An ordinance to appropriate $1,358,667 in the Miscellaneous Grants Fund and Capital Projects Fund for the Federal Transportation Alternatives Program.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Ready for a vote?
Let, let me ask a question. It's a big deal.
It's a big deal. It's a big deal.
Yeah.
It's a big deal.
So this, this started, and Councilmember Gibson and Councilmember DeWorke, who both represent Overbrook, and Councilmember Dow, who was there with you, at the neighborhood meeting where the rally at Overbrook was discussed.
All right.
And the community was very appreciative of the presence of staff there and our willingness to put in a much-needed sidewalk in Loun, on Lounce Hill. I'm not sure how this compares to others, but this could be the longest one, maybe the most expensive one we've been working on. 5,100 linear feet is what I read in the ordinance, right? It's a long way, and staff has been working incredibly hard to get, and it's going to do so much for this community's safety in accessing, you know, I mean, a lot of kids walk along this road, so just so excited to hear it's coming. We still have a little ways to go on it before we're going to start seeing things turn.
Still have a little ways to go. So this is some grant funds that we got approved through GPATS, so we're very appreciative of that. And this, through these funds, we'll have to enter into a participation agreement with SEDOT. These are federal funds that come through SEDOT. And we just executed that agreement last week, actually. We got that agreement executed. So now we'll be moving forward with the process of getting plans approved by SEDOT. It does require us to do an environmental study, and then we, we do have some right-of-way easements to acquire, but we're looking to do all of that over the next four, five months and hopefully start, be ready for construction in spring of next year. Looking at probably about a year of construction schedule. It's a mile of sidewalk.
Will this be co-transco also? Will this fall onto them?
No, this is city Greenville managed.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Med, I think there's, I think there, there's a point to be made here, too, that many of our neighborhoods are set up as a grid, linear grids. Well, if anyone's familiar with Overbrook, it's, it's not at all. It goes around a hill and valley and by streams and everything. And so kids, walkers, particularly, we worry about kids particularly there, there's no linear, there's no alternative for people to walk or kids to walk through that neighborhood without zigzagging back and forth because their, parents don't want them on Lounce Hill because, you know, that's a busy road. Now with that sidewalk, those kids and other people have a direct shot that they don't have to zigzag or zigzag out of way of a car either. So I'm very excited about it.
And this is a, this is a NIB project, so it's being funded through the NIB and then these enhancement funds that we got. So.
That means it's being funded by the City of Greenville Sidewalk Improvement Program. We build sidewalks all over the city in neighborhoods, but this one needed extra, so we had to get federal funds or state funds for this as well. So, all good. Okay. Ready for a vote? Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. Okay, 15B?
An ordinance, an ordinance to annex approximately 0.54 acre of real property located on Virginia Avenue. So moved.
Motion, sir. Ready for, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. Okay, thank you. Resolution 16A, first and final?
A resolution to approve a naming opportunity agreement with Baxter and Ashley Moore for the event space at the Greenville Zoo. So moved.
So moved.
Good evening. I also have a presentation.
Bill, any going on?
Yes, Greenville Zoo. Good evening, everybody. Next slide, please. So we're here to talk about the Phillips Family Farm. This project priced at $3.6 million stands as the largest single project in zoos' history, a milestone achieved through a combination of public and private funding. The state's substantial contribution of $2.3 million coupled with an additional $1.3 million from private and foundation funds has made this ambition venture, ambitious venture possible. Phillips Family Farm will feature an eclectic collection of farm animals from various parts of the globe, offering visitors a unique glimpse into a global agricultural diversity. The 2,500 square feet event facility will host up to 125 guests and will be the first space of its kind in the zoo. Next slide, please. So the new animal residents will be Scottish Highland cattle, known for their distinctive long horns and thick coats; Mediterranean donkeys hailing from the Italian Islands. These donkeys are renowned for their gentle nature; alpacas native to the Andes Mountains of South America, alpacas are valued for their soft wool; Flemish rabbits originating from Belgium, these rabbits are one of the largest and oldest domestic breeds; and American barn owls, known for their distinctive heart-shaped faces and excellent hunting skills, barn owls play a vital role in pest control. So we extend our heartfelt gratitude to all who have contributed to the realization of the Phillips Family Farm. Special thanks to the state of South Carolina for their substantial funding, the City of Greenville and staff, Nancy Phillips for her major donation and who is the naming sponsor, Greg and Patty Gibson for their generous donation to the rabbitry, the Community Foundation for supporting the barn owl exhibit, and Platt and Ashley Moore for their contribution at the AMPM Farms Overlook. Platt, Platt Moore happens to be here tonight.
Yep.
Stand.
Yep.
And the Greenville Zoo Foundation for their tremendous efforts at raising these dollars that will bring this project to life. Several board members from the Greenville Zoo Foundation are here tonight.
Yeah, please.
No, stand, please. In closing, I'd just like to say the Phillips Family Farm is more than just an exhibit. It's a celebration of community effort, global agricultural heritage, and a commitment to education and conservation.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you all.
Thank you, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you very much. We appreciate you all being here too for the, for the meeting. 16B?
A resolution to reappoint various judicial positions in municipal court under Chapter 22 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Greenville.
Okay, the esteemed Judge Matt Holligan is here with us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We moved the reelection, reappointment of these people. They're daily working in the court and very vital to our success down there.
Moving to approve. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. 16C?
A resolution to modify the membership requirements for the City of Greenville Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee to continue to align with South Carolina Code of Law Section 6-4-25A. So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, Madam Manager, anything, anything up last weekend that we should know about?
I'm not, I think that's mine on Fall for Greenville. So I'm delighted to acknowledge the incredible efforts of our dedicated staff through the Bank of America Fall for Greenville, our second best ever. Again, I'm going to tell y'all, if Josh McPhee gives y'all a call to come and play at Fall for Greenville, you should say yes. He said it was incredible. I listened to his pick of the weekend, Ishiwashi, and he was amazing. So anyway, I'm just saying, Josh McPhee, if anybody, if there are any aspiring musicians out there listening, I'm not sure how much they actually listen to the City of Greenville City Council meetings, but if they are, they should definitely answer the call when Josh calls. So, all right, your countless hours of planning and execution have truly paid off, resulting in the second highest-growing festival weekend. Your efforts not only brought joy and entertainment to our community, but showcased the vibrant spirit of Greenville. From coordinating vendors, volunteers, and entertainment to ensuring everything ran smoothly, your commitment to excellence is evident in every aspect of the festival. I would also like to extend a heartfelt thank you to our police and fire teams for ensuring public safety throughout the weekend, and I was there, some with them. Your dedication to maintaining a pristine envi, oh, I'm sorry, your presence provided a safe and secure environment for all attendees, and for that, we are deeply grateful. And I see y'all are laughing, there must have been something good up there.
I saw somebody running across the screen.
Oh, boy. A special thanks also to Public Works and Parks and Grounds for your tireless work in keeping the site clean throughout the weekend. I will tell y'all, I've seen more comments on social media in the last two days about just how clean everything was throughout the festival. Your dedication to maintaining a pristine environment did not go unnoticed and contributed greatly to the overall success of the festival. I would also like to extend my gratitude to the parking team. We got to make sure that they get some luck because they worked really hard this weekend too. For managing the parking garages, their exceptional customer service made a lasting impression as they were the first point of contact for many festival attendees arriving downtown. I also want to recognize IT. Sometimes we forget some of our supporting departments, but our IT department, especially Thalen Dodd's, for leading the initiative to help the festival go ticketless, and it was a great success, and I think everybody loved the new ticketless system. This massive undertaking was executed flawlessly and the high praise we received is a testament to your hard work, and I think y'all enjoyed seeing the real-time statistics that we were able to provide that we haven't been able to do before, knowing who was the number one vendor and what was the number one seller, and it was, I shall not say.
We know.
Comeback Brown Team.
Crab cakes.
Don't give away all our secrets. Our GreenLink team deserves recognition for providing exceptional trolley service, ensuring attendees could navigate the festival and enjoy all that it had to offer. The communications team alongside PRT's marketing team, who worked diligently to highlight the festival throughout the weekend. Your efforts in keeping the community informed and engaged are greatly appreciated, and the communications team doesn't usually, I had to make sure they had some video and